At this time, the Madison County School Board meeting is called to order. I would like to welcome each of you to the March 28th, 2022 Madison County School Board meeting. At this time, would you please stand for a moment of silence in the Pledge of Allegiance? The pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome to tonight's meeting. I welcome you to our meeting tonight. This is a meeting held in the public, not a public meeting. We have a set agenda that will be followed. Anyone wishing to address the board may do so at the beginning of the meeting during public input. The sign-in sheet is at the back as you enter the room. You will have three minutes to address the board. The board members in attendance tonight, we have Ms. Suzie Williamson, Ms. Carol Gibson, Mr. Frankie Carroll, Ms. Soretta Bell, Emma Self-Bard-Lawford. Superintendent Joseph is present with her secretary, Ms. Bishop, which is secretary of the superintendent and to the board. We also have Mr. Reeves, the board attorney, present this evening. And again, welcome to each of you tonight to the meeting. Do we have anyone signed up for public input?
No.
Okay, thank you. There's no public input at this time. We have a presentation, the restorative justice presentation. Ms. Joseph.
Okay, Mr. Dale Landry has been working with the Madison County Central School with the restorative justice program, and he's going to do a little summary of the events that has happened, that has occurred this year. Mr. Landry.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Madam Superintendent, and fellow board members, my name is Dale Landry, and I'm a village architects incorporated. I was asked to come in to give you a pretty much an update of where we're at right now since we started the program back in July, actually, when we got on the ground. But we actually started working on a restorative justice project back in 2019 with the first meeting with the superintendent. And then following that, we had a series of focus groups that went in during early 2020 with a plan to implement, but then COVID hit. And because of COVID, we wound up holding off until the beginning of this school, this school year. What I provided, well, the purpose of the program that came on board initially was to help set up an alternative discipline program that would help reduce the number of out-of-school suspensions of a lot of the kids and expulsion, and to help improve school safety as well as academics. And then from that standpoint, we sat together and worked with the focus group to help develop the model. And Madison County Central School was identified to be the pilot to implement the program act. And we started back in, again, as I said, July, which began with a lot of the planning and working with them to help prepare, to start it. And then through the, starting in the month of August when schools started, we actually, I was on the ground at MCCS where I was working with Mr. Williams and the staff there to help implement the program. You have, I put together a kind of summarization because I understand the superintendent sent out my reports that I had submitted, the monthly reports. And so what I did was I went back and summarized what we had been working with. I had been working with the school to try to pull together numbers for you guys for this, but I, I can't answer the question. I have one set that came in from one person, and the other one couldn't, got tied up, and she couldn't give me the other numbers, and so we were not able to pull all of those together. But you will see that on the final report that will come in when we get ready to wrap up the program. However, I gave you a brief summarization of all of the things from the reports for you to review that talks about the amount of kids that we've worked with and things we've done with the teachers, the training, technical assistance with staff, and actual interventions that we have done with the kids. So with that being said, and not really realizing which way to go, what I would rather do is be able to answer any questions you may have as to what we have done or what we have not done.
I've got a question. We have the contract until the end of June, I think it is, or July?
Yes, ma'am. Somewhere in there, I don't know which one.
Well, I can, I can look it up. No, I think our, until, well, May 31st, possibly. Okay. Now, if you've trained the teachers or the administrators how to go about this approach?
We have had some training. The only teachers that I sat back and really did anything were, were the middle school teachers. And that was because the middle school AP stepped up and said, hey, come in and work with my staff, I need them to be involved.
Okay, so you were targeting the middle school grades?
It was supposed to be all, but it was, that was the only one that came forward and asked that I come in and sit down and work with her, her teachers.
Okay, so from this point on, they should have a good handle about how it's operated, right? How, they should be able to go forth with it?
We still have some problems. And what I mean by that is, we need to get the process locked in because it was not, it hadn't been consistent. And, and then we need to get people to have specific responsibilities that seem to be flowing back and forth. And primarily the person, when we initially set it up, we put together a planning team, a team that's supposed to be on the ground to implement. The decision was made that Ms. Griffin would be the primary person since she was the dean and had been there the most. Yet, I've been there working with her and trying to help her, but she's just so overwhelmed with so many different things that she has not really had the time to commit to doing this. And so it's been pretty much moving and working with her primarily and with Ms. Bridges because Ms. Bridges stepped forward to really embrace it because a lot of the kids were coming from the middle school. So she took even a much more active role, but normally when I get to the school, it's those two that I primarily meet with to start moving forward. But I have done some work with the elementary, but it's not been consistent like we've been doing with the middle school.
Now, when, when I look at like, for instance, July, let's go back to August. Five visits, does that mean you were there five times, or what does the five visits mean?
Well, we're saying, is this on the summary sheet?
This is something that was on the, our agenda.
Right. Like, I see I got this August, and it says five circles. I didn't know if that's what you were referring to.
No, this was visits. It's actually said visits.
No, sir, I think she may be referring to the actual.
The actual report.
Yeah.
If it says five, I was there five, at least, yes, I was on-site those five times. Generally, I'm on-site twice a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays that I come in unless there's something happening or they can't be there. Then we'll coordinate over the phone and things of that nature. But generally, I'm there two, twice a week.
What I was, I guess what I'm thinking, was this a successful thing? Of course, we'll see, that, that'll come out, I'm sure.
We have had some successes. We have, ideally, almost every kid we've intervened with, with the exception, I think, I remember about one or two that we have not, we have, that we did have a problem with. But in most of those cases that we had, they were eventually, one, I know with the Bridges, but that came out of the board itself, out of the session itself, that everybody agreed to include the parent, that she needed to go to Bridges, all right? But most of the others, we haven't had any repeats too often that I know. And the only way I can track that, I have to go back and let them tell me whether we've had or had not. And when I talked to Ms. Bridges, she shared with me, with maybe the exception, maybe one, they'd come back again.
I, I think what I'm mostly concerned with, and I have the information here, I've already done my homework, is the fighting that's going on with the seventh and eighth graders.
Yes, ma'am.
A lot of, a lot of referrals for fighting.
We said.
And I'm, I'm very concerned about that because I, I actually, just recently, one of our employees is, is in intensive care right now due to some fighting.
What, what was supposed to happen was I had been working with Mr. Williams going back to December, and we sat down and I, and I shared with Mr. Williams, I said, we need to have an assembly and bring in all of our fighters and then all of our multiple repeat offenders. And we need to go into an assembly and bring them and their parents and sit down and have a conversation with them that, you know, there's no more fighting. And in the future fighting, we can take them through a restorative process where we will sit back and then they will be tracked by the MTSS staff to see if they're complying. Because once you go before a board, normally you get sanctioned. And out of the sanctions, the sanctions identify certain things. If you've got anger issues or those issues that are causing conflict, then we need to have you in a conflict resolution or workshops or things of this nature. Now, as of, I want to say February, I met with Mr. Blue, with Dr. Blue and his mental health providers because technically based on your own, these are the crew, people that need to be coming on board at the school to conduct these type of sessions because the kids need help. I'll, I'll say that. And what they need is someone to sit in there and put them in a group and then work with them from that standpoint on helping them to develop the capability to overcome those issues that's keeping them in the fighting. But on a big part, we've seen the fighting go down because during the first semester, they were, they were fighting off the chain, you know? And then so, but I think we started seeing them slow, that, that's starting to turn around. But we never had a chance to go and do the session that I asked to do.
Well, thank you. You've answered some questions.
So, so you never were able to do the assembly?
Just, no, no, sir.
Are you getting any parent involvement?
Yes, ma'am. As a matter of fact, many of them, we've had the parents to come in and literally the, the children, a lot of them don't want the parents involved. And, but, you know, in order to make this work, it's got to have the family, the parents have got to be involved. Because a lot of the stuff we're seeing is coming to the school from home or from the neighborhood. And we identified a lot of things in there too, such as some gang activities and things of this nature that were coming to the school from the community. And we've been able to work closely with the SROs as it relates to that and getting that information shared back and forth. And many times, I'm tapped by the SRO to get in and say, Mr. Landry, come in, we need you in here to sit down. And we have parents there at that time. And in most cases, when the parents are there for an MTSS meeting, they'll tap me, Ms. Yerrick, if they, you know, they're going to attend that, or the AP. And many times, I'm there. When they got the parents there and I'm on-site, they bring me in to work with them.
So since the, the program started, the behaviors have decreased?
We're seeing some. And, and as a matter of fact, it's interesting, the kids are even identifying, when they see me, they say, the man with the hat, is he here? And, and you know, some of them even know me by name because as we talk to them, and we're starting to adjust as, well, we try to help them understand their behavior is hurting people. They're hurting themselves as well as the, the fellow classmates. And we're starting to get them to see, you're getting ready to probably get sent from here to go somewhere else to go to school because this behavior is not going to be accepted. And they're starting to catch on to that, and they're starting to understand that. You know, you just can't come to school and fight. You just can't come to school and, and disrupt the classroom. As a matter of fact, we put another model together to address it because when you look at the classroom, the teacher can only, you know, many times they have these, these issues, the classroom disruption starts to go beyond five and 10 minutes. Anytime you've got a classroom disruption that goes that far, you've lost that class that day. Because technically speaking, when we look at a class, classes are about 50 minutes long, 10 minutes for a teacher to prepare for the class, to do the work they got to do, and 10 minutes for them to get ready to leave. So really, they only have about 30 good minutes of actual time to teach. And if you get a student in there that disrupts that, that takes that teacher all off-site, off, off-topic and everything else. So we put in a system that I, I recommended to them that at two minutes, if a teacher sees you can't handle it in two minutes, send them out and get an administrator so you can continue teaching the class. Then, once we get them out, then what happens is on the restorative model, then what you do is do an assessment. Is the kid in crisis that bad that they maybe need to go home? And then what they do is they do a therapeutic, I think that's what they call it, a therapeutic day instead of an out-of-school suspension until they can get the parent back the next day. And then again, they'll sit down and go through a restorative discussion with that parent about the kid. In the case of kids that you can handle real quick and it's not an issue that they're going to be a threat on campus, then either let them go back to class or put them in ISD. But when you structure ISD, structure it from a standpoint that it's not a, a place for them to go and play, it's a place for them to go and actually do work, but at the same time, focus on their behavior in an effort to get them back in the classroom because everything is about getting the kid back into the classroom, you know, with the minimum amount of disruption. So to that extent, we are seeing some that are changing. I can think about five off the top of my head that I know by name that have actually turned their behavior. And, and another thing that I had recommended to them was, first thing in the morning when school opened, let's go into a restorative session in that first five minutes, let's do a check-in. Because at that point in time, many teachers can identify that the kid's got a crisis or problem, that we can go ahead and pull that kid right then, talk with them and see what's going on, and then be able to see if they need to stay for the rest of the day or do they need to go home. Because we had a kid, I got you, Madam Superintendent, we got a kid, case in, case in point, his dad had been put in the hospital, and that's who he lived with, and no one else but his, his father. And they had told him that his dad was going to, they didn't know what was going to happen because he had heart condition. Well, the kid was in school, and he needed to be home because they told him that he couldn't see his parents. And so he started acting out, and then I pulled him to the side, what's going on? Then he told me. Then we were able to go and get the resources together to get him to his father. So we could see because he didn't know, all he knew was his father got put in the ambulance, and he was staying, and somebody had him staying with somebody else. So it's these kinds of things that we can, we can pick up early before the kid actually goes into crisis and we got a problem.
You say you have about five that you know that have, their behaviors have changed?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you stay in consistent contact with the parents even though they're doing good? To stay?
I, I don't.
Consistency?
I'm a consultant there to help them. The, the, the staff are the ones that have to do it, you know? I'm not really there, I'm there to train, as you had asked me, ma'am, train them and get them prepared so they can do it. I don't call and talk to parents because I'm not a teacher, I'm not an administrator, I'm a consultant. But when the parents are there and I'm there, then I step in and work with them.
But is that part of your model to, to have consistency to contact the parent even with good behaviors so you can stay on track?
We need to. Parents always got to be updated and kept up to date. At the same time, so you get information back from the parent reference to what's happening in the home so we can do an even deeper assessment of the kid. It should be an ongoing cycle until we get the kid to complete.
Right.
Let me ask you this.
Yes, sir.
Is the staff buying into the program?
They're starting to. They're starting to. They, they are.
They're starting.
They're, they're starting to. We're starting to see a whole, as a matter of fact, more of them are starting to grab me and say, Mr. Landry, can you come in and work with me here and work with me there? Initially, we, anytime you bring change, you got to get buy-in from staff. And one of the biggest things that happened to get the buy-in was when Ms. Bridges asked me to go meet with her sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade teachers. And many of them really didn't understand the, the program until we sat down and talked. And many of them were resistant because they thought it was a thing that really comes in and, and, and coddles the kids. But see, that is, it's the opposite. Kids don't like restorative justice because restorative justice requires them to have to be accountable for their behavior. It requires them to have to admit, I did wrong. And it requires them to have, but see, when we go in straight punishing, it doesn't require any of that because you've taken that from them to have to do it. You told them what they got to do. Then all they got to do is comply. But restorative justice, it's not that easy. No, you got to sit up and say, hey, and that's what I'm training them to do, and that's what we do with the kid.
Now, you said training. Now, in the, like, as a teacher, when I've had to have some training for, they'll train all of us, you know? In other words, it's, it'll be some kind of a discipline program.
Right, ma'am.
And so they get all the teachers together and all the aides and everybody, and everybody's on board, and we understand the, the process. Now, have you, do you get, I, I'm just wondering.
No, it's fair.
Because, in other words, have you gotten all, all the teachers together and explain how this operates and how it works?
When school started, in one of the in-school sessions, I think we had about a 30-minute conversation about what it was and a real quick overview of what it was about. When Ms. Bridges asked me to come in, we actually sat with like five or six teachers per grade, and we sat and had a deep, deeper conversation. Furthermore, you all purchased books for the kids, I mean, for the teachers. It's called Restorative Discipline in, in schools. And I know the middle school teachers got the books. And I, and I think there's another book, there were two, one Trauma in the, Trauma, and the other one was on that Restorative Justice. I know all the middle school teachers got them. I don't know if everybody else has got them yet. And we sat and we talked and went in more detail, and now they're coming to the ground, the teachers, and say, Mr. Landry, can you come over here with us? We got this kid up. Can you share this or can you work with this with me? And so out of the middle school, I get a lot of that.
Well, I was, I was wondering about the training, you know?
Yes, ma'am.
What type of training they receive because we're very concerned about discipline, you know?
Yes, ma'am.
In schools. It causes problems, it's disruptive to their learning, and it's very harmful for everything all the way around. And I, I was just wondering, because I, I have checked, read everything I can read about this, that you're, and I was wondering how you went about, you know, getting the information out, let's say, to them.
And, and like I said, it was, I forget what, it was like a planning period, well, not a planning period, there was a break in the day that she could pull all of the teachers together.
That was common planning.
Uh-huh.
It was planning.
And right, and she pulled me in to sit down with each one of those groups. And we had some, we had some very good dynamic discussions.
You say the teachers pulled you up to the side?
Today, now they do.
Okay, but that's more like a one-on-one training for them?
Well, it's a one-on-conversation, but normally when they pull me to the side, they got a kid in tow. And they want me to go and talk with this kid or talk with groups of kids. And I do those sessions all the time, you know? And even though it may be me alone, the impact is to get it across to the kid and helping the kids to understand the behavior is wrong. But as we start increasing, if they start shifting, then we can start doing more, you know? And, but primarily it's them and the other ones that are starting to step in and get involved a lot more, well, I want to highlight one, and that's Ms. Dahl, I think. She is the MTSS RTI coordinator for the elementary school. And she's got some powerful things she's doing with the kids in group sessions. And the kids actually go to her and have asked her to reconvene, I think she, she had one. And I think she, that's a point, now she's getting ready to go and reconvene two more. Where they just come and sit in circles and discuss issues that they're going through. And the kids came to her. And this is part of the, the stuff we've been doing with the restorative justice. So I have to admit to you, she is doing a tremendous job. I'm not saying Amy's not, Amy's doing hers too, but she's the one that's really gotten in there with these kids.
You had made mention earlier concerning the assembly you wanted to have. Is there a way that you might could still have it before, I mean, I know we only have around 60 days left of school, but again, at least put on to the students that what their expectations are and maybe starting the next year off right where we're not having, I mean, do you think it's too late in the year to have the assembly?
I don't think, well, to be effective because we already were in, in the March going in April. It will carry us through the rest of April. See, I guess, Mr. Chair, is, when we said to do the assembly, and I think it would be a good idea because that way we can go ahead and get parents prepped. When we do the assembly, the parents need to be there. As a matter of fact, what I often say, many times, parents, where parents might not be able to be there, get an adult family member that can be there to represent the parent. The bottom line, they need to hear the information, you see? And what assembly was going to do was sit there and just have a conversation, then go into breakout with every parent and child and sit there and let that parent see, here's what your kid has done for this last year, here's why they're in assembly, and then, and this is why they have been identified. Then let the parents see, okay, one-on-one, here you go, here's what your kid has done repetitively. And, and here's the thing, you all have it within your school board policy, I think, for code of conduct, is that, I, I forget a minute, eight referrals, then at that point in time, then you're starting to look at a kid that might need to be expelled from the school because they're showing a pattern of, of misbehavior and that they're not changing. And then the key to it is often what I asked a lot of parents, are you ready to have your kid at home? Are you ready, you know, I asked the kids, do you want to go to virtual school? Because school is not a place for you to come and just act out and, 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 and act undisciplined. This is a place that has focus. We're here to teach kids, we're here to help, it's a learning environment. And if you want to fight, this is not the place. You need to go find you another place, you got to forgive me, I'm retired, so, you know, I, I talk to that company. You got to go find yourself somewhere else to play if you ask what you're going to do. But if you're going to be in school, you have to, you have to follow the guidelines, you have to follow the rules. Because every time you violate them, you hurt somebody. You hurt yourself or you hurt your fellow classmates. And, and many of the kids will sit there and when we talk to them and say, what did you do? Who did you hurt? And then many of them will say, if it was my, my fellow classmates. And I asked them why? Well, I took away from the learning. So they know. It's just a matter, we just got to work with them, we have them understand, and then work with parents, to get parents to comply. And I, and I grant you, we got a problem with parents, but the system got a way to deal with that too. We just got to be able to get the documentation done to be able to bring it before you guys so you can do what you have to do.
You said the contract ended on May 31st?
That's when the students.
That's.
Or our school.
Yes.
School ends, you know, so, I mean, it prob, I don't remember exactly where the contract states, but the students will no longer be there unless they're in summer school.
What I'm saying is, is this program going to continue next year? That's what I'm asking pretty much.
There'll be a board decision.
That'll be the board decision, but again, I, I would hate for, if he wanted to do this assembly and it hadn't been done, I don't want us to keep you from being able to do that assembly. If you're, if you're feeling that this assembly will help increase positive behavior and decrease negative, then by all means, if you think the last, at this point, it would make a difference, I mean, I would like for us to try it and.
I'm ready.
And we can do what we need, or Ms. Joseph could help us do what we need to do that.
We wait on the school personnel, administration to set up the assembly, we let the school handle that.
Okay, well, I, I mean, I, I can't speak for the other board members, but I don't want to have you not be able to do your job because we hadn't done a part of something.
Well, the key to it was, anything that I did generated up from working. Well, the key to it was, anything that I did generated up from working with the school and addressing what we may need to do. And my thing is, I'm ready to do whatever they ask me to do, to do it. Because again, this is your pilot. This was the pilot that we were putting on, on, at this school to be ready to move to others, you see, as needed. And, uh.
If you do the assembly, behavior is normally higher or, or it escalates towards the end of the year. So it should, it could benefit them, to detour them from misbehaving towards the end of the year.
And that too, and then it also can send a signal of what they expect starting next year.
Right.
You see, that will be tolerated or not tolerated. And, uh, I'll smile at it, you know. I'll be ready to come back next year if you need me.
Well, I, I mean, I don't know that it's getting any better anytime. I mean, you would hope it would get better, but, um, behavior is, um.
I think if we moved it a different way, and what I mean by that is this. And please forgive me. When you put a pilot in, then you're supposed to do everything you can to make the pilot work.
Right.
And, and I think what had happened was early on with the change of the school coming in, coming in from COVID and overwhelming, we never got to where we needed to start from. We didn't start gelling until around December timeframe. The reality of it is, we need to be coming with the emphasis of this and that this is a priority at the first of the school year. Then from that standpoint, look at things. Because the one thing, like I said, when I do my end of, end of year report, I'll point out the problems that were there and the recommendations of how we start and implement, uh, if you're going to do it a, another year, to really make it happen. Because I think that we've learned from that, because they're, they're moving and we're getting more and more involved. And we're getting more and more involved.
And it needs to, I mean, I feel that, um, it doesn't need to be optional. It needs to, as, as a district, we need to say, we are going to do this, that teachers at every grade level are going to do this, not if you want to do it or not want to do it. I mean, that's, sitting here as a board, we've paid for this and we have the middle school basically being involved with it. And I'm sure there's behavior issues in K through five that could benefit from it. Not saying that they're not, but based on what you've said, the middle school has had the bigger buy-in from faculty and staff. Um, I, I just feel that it needs to be across the board that at all grade levels. If we're saying if we've invested this money as a district, then it needs to be laid out that you will do this. It's not optional, just like when we used to do AR. It wasn't for people to do, well, if I want to do it, I'm going to do it. If not, everybody should be doing the same thing.
And then tie in all the other resources.
Right.
Because like I said, with the mental health providers, then let's look at how do they fit in? Because the, the kids need to have these groups, you know. It, it's like people say, you got anger management, and then they send them off and they go to two anger management workshops and that's supposed to be fixed. Absolutely not. Anger is an issue that takes, it's like a therapy. You got to go through therapy and help them to learn. And so I had, like I said, when I talked to Dr. Blue, he was online with it. But again, we just talked in February, but before we go out at the end of the year, hopefully we'll have a, that model and specific workshops that we can work with the kids both in school and for some kids, I would say to you, we need to have something for them to do after school. In other words, because if the behavior is that extensive, the parent, and you want to let your kids stay in the school system, then you need to be able to bring your kids and have them to come here and get this, you know, go through these workshops so they can learn new behaviors.
Go ahead.
You say several have been redirected anyway, so it's happened someone.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I, um, I appreciate all you've done and I look forward to seeing your recommendations of how we can make this be better. I mean, I, it, it sounds like there is opportunity for improvement.
Oh, it is.
Of what's been going on. And, um, if you, if you could do the assembly, I mean, I think that would be great to, at least we only have sixty days left, but you could, like, get across to the kids what the expectations are and that it's not going to be tolerated.
And the parents.
And the parents, both.
And the parents. Because I think many parents, and I've seen it, I think they're going to just dump, just dump the kids and expect the school to handle it. And you can't do that.
No. I, I appreciate you coming. Does anyone else have any questions?
If you, if you get to have the assembly and stuff, can we go?
Can you what?
Can we go?
Barmy, I, I don't see any.
We'll just have, she'll have to advertise it if it's more than one of you and we'll get the information that you know.
When, when you talk about assembly, though, you're talking about just the targeted kids and their, their parents.
Primarily, yes, sir.
I would, I would just be interested in how, how it works and.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, um, no one else has any other questions. We appreciate you coming tonight.
But let me ask, if I could, one more thing now, and what to, Mr. Carroll just said, just targeting those. But I would think, if this is school-wide, that you want to have an assembly with all the students.
I would say, you, you, let me, let me, while we were targeting this, that population is because of the large number of them. All the kids weren't, and we were only going to be coming in there to talk about discipline and the issue that these kids all had. So that was a targeted group.
Because, okay, because I was going to say, even the best children.
Yes.
Will mess up sometimes. And in other words, it's, it's never, you, you, with the, to me, when you're, like your own child.
Yes, ma'am.
You're, you have to reinforce it and say, we don't do this and this is okay and be careful of that. So I think you can never have too many, I, I think what I'm thinking, the assembly might just address the whole issue, you know, with, with the whole, maybe the sixth, or seventh, or eighth, or whatever. That's just my idea.
Oh, no, ma'am.
You're, you're the expert, not me.
You're absolutely correct. Because in another school that I've worked at, I've worked with Griffin Middle School in Tallahassee.
Uh-huh.
At the beginning of the school year, they have assembly. They'll have a sixth grade, the seventh grade, and the eighth grade. And they'll come, that's the opening assembly where they get introduced to everybody. And as a part of that, they get introduced to the discipline program. Then what you can do later on, like we had here, well, we had, going into December, we had just so many. Then it became an issue that we had enough that we needed to really consider target, taking those kids that had multiple referrals and those kids that had been fighting. And take them to the side and sit down with them and just have this deep conversation. And, uh, part of the conversation we needed to do was come in and, and my recommendation that I needed to come in and, and work through with your, uh, with your, your, your attorney. Well, maybe one of the people we want to bring is the district attorney, I mean, the state attorney. And here's why. Many of the parents and the kids think that when they're fighting, they're self-defense. It ain't self-defense. It's a mutual affair. And for many parents, uh, I mean, I know of instance where parents have actually taken the kid to go to another kid's house in the evening to come, confront. And the thing about it is, many of the parents don't realize, self-defense is based on imminent threat, not, you know, well, you said something about me and he hit me, then I came back and hit him later. No, that's not self-defense. So a lot of parents need to learn what that was. And, and we, I've done that before in Tallahassee. Well, we did have the state attorney to address some of that. Because once parents understand, you don't have a safe, this is not self-defense, that this is actually a crime. Then you saw that whole attitude change about, you can go back and hit back. What is it, if he hits you, well, you better go hit him back. That's a crime.
I like the idea of getting, at the high school now, and Mr. Killingsworth was the principal, that I remember they used to take each grade level. And you'd like the ninth graders and the SRO would speak to them and explain to them, do this, you know, don't do the, you know, love. And I, I, I sat in on some of that and I thought that was very informative, you know, for the kids. Because some of them just don't know.
And, and, and a hundred percent, my background, I'm retired army, but I was a cop for twenty-one years. And so I dealt with that domestic violence and that whole range of things. But the bottom line out of it, that's where that comes from. Because there's a lot we can do with the SRO as it relates to helping to support that without any arrest. It's just a matter of helping them to understand the behavior is wrong. And, and, and you can't fall back on these false narratives about what is self-defense, what's not self-defense. And, 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 and parents, some of them need to be sat, be sat down with and talk to. That some of the things you're doing are crossing the line as it relates to you because you don't have a right to come into school and yell at administrators. You, you, I mean, you do a lot of things, but you can't do that. That's common. So I mean, it's certain things we can share with people and help educate them and help them to learn and help them understand the correct way we're supposed to be doing things.
Now, I think that's a great idea to do that. I mean, because like you said, a lot of parents don't know. And in many instances, a lot of the kids who are acting up, not always, you have, may have parents coming in and they're acting up because the child's gotten in trouble and it's just a snowball effect of a lot of dysfunction. But I think that's a good idea. And again, I look forward to the recommendations of how we can make it better and what we need to do as a district to make it better.
Yes, sir.
Because I would, I mean, I do want to see it like be successful and, and decrease poor behavior or poor choices.
And, and give a little options. Because let that be if you have to go and use what we call traditional discipline. And then again, the parents got a choice. Do you want to go the restorative route or do you want to go with the discipline and the code of conduct? And, and so, and it's never been meant to overplace your code of conduct.
Right.
By any means. We work in addition to with the code of conduct.
And it's, I mean, I don't know that any board member here wants to expel kids. And luckily, we really had, had to do that as of late. But back fifteen, twenty years ago, we did have a lot of expulsions. And, um, no one wants to do that, but we just didn't have the options that we have today where you could do other things instead of expulsion. But, because that really is not the answer.
Right.
If you have a child who's, who's really acting up, they need help and to see what the problem is. So I do appreciate you coming tonight and look forward to the recommendations of what we need to do as a district and a school site to make this where it's a better transition next fall.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, um, item two point zero amendments to the agenda, there's none. Um, three point one, comments from public input. I don't think there's any comments. At this time, um, we will look at the consent items. Um, four point one, um, the minutes from the March the first workshop. Um, also the minutes from the March the seventh, um, school board meeting under four point one. Four point two, the fish, um, the Florida inventory of school houses, the fish report. Um, four point three, the waiver to the Willie and Glenn Act. Um, that's request an approval to operate the summer food service program on the twenty-two day schedule. That summer school, for summer school classes, it will be provided at Madison County Central School. Breakfast and lunch will be provided to all students at no cost. And those will be the items of consent. Is there a motion to approve those items?
I made the motion to approve the consent agenda items.
It's been properly moved by Ms. Bell. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Gibson? It's been properly moved by Ms. Bell, seconded by Ms. Gibson. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, all those in favor of the consent items, please show a hand. Five of Ms. Bishop for approval of the consent items. Um, five point one, um, items of individual consideration. Five point one, the utility easement for the city of Madison. Ms. Joseph?
Okay, Mr. Chair, this, uh, item was presented by Attorney Reeves and he will explain it.
You haven't packet a perpetual, a form of perpetual utilities. The city of Madison is requesting that we grant the city of Madison a utility easement. The easement itself, I believe, is a twenty-foot strip. Um, and it goes along the, the Madison side of the central school property, I believe. Is that, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir, it is.
And, and the point of it is that it would allow them to run utilities back to a, uh, development that Mr. Grass is, uh, attempting to, uh, to do between ninety and, was it Captain Brown right there? You, you remember the old solar farm that used to have those long tubes? I think that's the property, isn't it, Mr. Grant? And so they need that easement to get those utilities back to that development. Um, and, uh, the easement is in regular form. I don't think there's any problem with it. Um, that's your property though, so of course the school, the school board owns that property. Um, you're not required to give an easement, but, you know, in the past, we've done these kinds of things whenever it's called for. And, and I don't, do, do we need to say anything else, Mr. City Manager?
Uh, maybe just go with any, Mr. Reeves.
Yes, sir.
Then future, we're going to go to the forty agenda item to the board chair, members of the board. Uh, and Mr. Reeves, have a senior.
Yes, sir.
I would like to do for a couple of minutes is to, uh, just share a couple of, uh, things that might give you a thumbnail view of how the whole process looks. And I think you might be a little more comfortable with it. But I like to do it in two phases, uh, because I am somewhat of a visual learner. Uh, and Mr. Reeves is very familiar with the legal jargon, oftentimes one to three to two. So I've drawn a layman's layout of what that might look like. And probably he'll walk me through it in about a minute or so, uh, and then verify what the, uh, what the, uh, what the legal jargon speaks to.
So this is right here, the easement, you want to put the pipe down here?
Okay, uh, just for familiarity, our Jerome White, City Manager, City of Madison. And then the audience also, uh, Mr. Grass. Uh, Mr. and Mrs. Grass have made preparations through a limited liability corporation. To build twenty-four homes, uh, on twenty-four acres. Uh, those homes will be one home per acre and they will schedule to me, uh, the measurements of between, uh, eighteen hundred and two thousand square feet. Well, the city is excited, number one, because it's a, uh, it's a moment in growth that we look forward to. Uh, living quarters are crucial in our smaller rural community. And I applaud him for moving forward with the effort. Now, in order for him to build those twenty-four homes, it is their desire to have city water and city gas referred to as city utilities. Uh, the city is going to do everything it can to make sure that those utilities are made available. But in the process of doing it, uh, this is where the easement comes in in terms of requests for access to run those utilities to the property. Uh, if you look at the, uh, rough thrown handout you see for Highway ninety is. And if you look just, uh, to the left of that, you see a big blue dot?
Yep.
That's the current location of where both the water and gas utilities stop, or they're located at. They continue forward, but that's the logical area to tap in in order to permit us to run those utilities forward.
Is that the fenced, uh, substation there?
Oh, no.
No.
That's the lift station.
Gotcha.
That's you run that one further. Uh, but in order to access that, we would need that easement, which would be, uh, on the, uh, east side or of central school, I think I've leaked it out. And we believe that twenty feet will be appropriate, uh, for the, uh, departments to be able to run the pipe, both gas and water in the same ditch, which would be about eight to ten feet wide. And then make those utilities available to the grasses. Now, long range, uh, it has always been my view, uh, that if you put utilities in place, then users will come. Uh, I look forward to future growth in terms of areas like the golf course. Uh, you've got the, uh, America that's just on the other side of the golf course. Those things are down the road. But since we were having a process made of running utilities across the property, uh, then the city stands to avail, uh, a lot of the communities too, people that will be in need. That's long range. But immediately, uh, this perpetual easement would allow us, uh, to be divided, utilities and services to Mr. and Mrs. Grass. Uh, and so that's probably the thunder, the heart of it. I don't know if you need to hear anything from Mr. and Mrs. Grass and I don't pass.
I've got a question. This dash line, is that the, uh, the road?
Are the dash lines?
Yes, is that the road?
No, ma'am. That's the area where the perpetual easement, uh, you see the twenty feet in between.
The single dash line.
The single dash line?
Yes.
Yes, that's the road that leads from Highway ninety that drives, uh.
Along the school.
Along the school. Mm-hmm. It does.
And Mr. Drone, this would be, that would be underground?
Utilities?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, ma'am. Most certainly will. Uh, I'm excited because not only will utilities go there, but you'll also have lots of fiber optics, uh, other means of communications, you know, that's probably top level in terms of what communities are looking for. And so there's some real growth potential here. So, or that's the whole purpose behind the request for the easement.
Now, if I chose the east of that driveway, sometime we park out that way, would that be a problem?
Uh, it will not interfere because once we run the pipe, uh, it'll be closed up on the ground, as you've mentioned, uh, and made safe again for parking. Uh, there's nothing there that would cause any further damage. And the requirements and criteria are, is that it be between three and four to three and a half to four feet below the surface.
So if kids are there playing or practicing, that won't be a problem?
Uh, we're going to do everything as far as MOT. And that's mobilization of, uh, equipment to make sure that, first of all, it's.
I mean, once it gets constructed, I know doing construction.
Once it's finished, it'll be no problem.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And do you believe that the city will be able to complete the construction over the summer break? Or when are they going to?
I believe that we can, Mr. and Mrs. Grass would like to go right back there. And she has given us the impression that it is fast paced, which we enjoy. And we've gathered the numbers and things, and so would you like to answer that, Mr. Chair?
I would expect the construction itself to take about two days and it will happen some other end of May or early June.
Okay, if they're on campus during the time the students are in, then we'll have to be fingerprinting.
And, and so that's called the Jessica Lunsford Act. And so if we have any, any contractors out there while the kids are there, we have to do that. Now, y'all can always do it on a Saturday and a Sunday. And, you know, you wouldn't have to deal with Jessica Lunsford Act. Or do it, like you're saying, after the kids get out in.
What will happen is that the city employees are going to do majority of the work. Including the ditch, the preparation of it, insulation of both the water and the gas pipes too. But to meet that criteria, as the superintendent mentioned, yes, if they require fingerprinting because of their presence, we can do that.
They will, and that's just small, we don't have, we don't have.
And I'm glad to know that some housing is coming because Madison has a shortage of nice, you know, we got some bad situations people are living in, so it's good that.
We've been working very hard to get housing, fair housing in Madison. And so the grasses came along with a great idea. There are other things we believe that can happen, that will make Madison a little bit more attractive in terms of those available. I mean, though, that's been a challenge for a long time, so it's nothing new, but you're right.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the request for the utility easement?
I move to approve the utility easement for the city of Madison.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Mr. Carroll, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Williamson. It's been properly moved by Mr. Carroll, seconded by Mr. Williamson. Is there any further discussion? If there's none, all those in favor, show a hand, please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White.
And thank you so much, too.
Five point two, five point two is personnel changes, Mr. Killensworth.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This evening, I have one name that we're bringing before you for recommendation. As you can see, there's five that unfortunately either are no longer now or at the end of the year will not be with us. And on the back page, there are three for approved substitute bus drivers or monitors, as well as a supplemental position, which would go along with the instructional recommendation at the top.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the personnel changes?
I made a motion to approve the personnel changes and the substitute bus driver.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Ms. Williamson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson. It's been properly moved by Ms. Williamson, seconded by Ms. Gibson, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, show a hand. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. Five point three, the insurance agent of record, Mr. Killensworth.
Yes, sir. We have listened to y'all's request, as well as all the employees, about trying to find a better fix for our employees, for insurance wise. What we're trying to do at this time, and what I'm bringing before you today is we have Mr. Kelly, which basically is an agent of record. He is one that the insurance committee had met, talked with, and would like to recommend as our agent of record, which basically is short, is the middleman between us and the actual insurance company to try to give us better rates, more economical, and to help us all the way around. As you know, we've taken a bath the last couple of years with some hits. And, and what we have is a draft copy of, in order to basically change agent of record, that's kind of what happens is you turn around and take this, and then you'll end up sending it to the various carriers. And he becomes our middleman, so to speak.
So are we, are we in the process of bidding out to see if possible changes?
We will, we will do an agent of record, that agent of record then will bid it out for us to try to get a lower rate.
And, and would we continue to be in the profit share or out of that?
We, we can scrap that, we can keep it, we, I mean, we can do whatever. When we are meeting with him, we will go over options, what would best suit the clientele that we have. Our best bank for a buck, so to speak. And then market it and see what agencies will carry us.
Because the last two years, we hadn't had such good luck with the profit share.
He's here, I mean, he can explain probably far better than I can.
Okay, that would be great.
Mr. Kelly.
Okay. My name's Jimmy Kelly, I reside in Jacksonville, Florida. I've had a lot of experience here with Madison County School Board. I hate to take y'all all the way back to some of the time, but nineteen eighty-four and eighty-five, I spent several years with Florida Blue in the Tallahassee office, being your representative here. Then I got transferred down to Tampa, returned to Jacksonville. And then two thousand and five to two thousand and twelve was the representative for Madison County School Board. So I've got a lot of history here, I handled the county, the city, I spent thirty years with Blue Cross. My last twelve years with Florida Blue, I was only in the public sector division. I handled every single school board from Ocala to Pensacola, so I know I ten real well. But I had the opportunity to meet with them, the insurance committee, and Shirley on several occasions. Shared with them that I really believed, as I have with Taylor Schools, Calhoun Schools, Jackson Schools, Bradford Schools, over the last five, six years since I retired from Florida Blue. I do believe that I can help y'all. There's a lot of things that go into, when do you pull a renewal? There's times that in January, February, you should be looking at these claims every single month, that's not going on. I expect to look at these claims every month. They're not going good right now, which means if you pulled it right now, the way the insurance company works renewals is they use annual trend. So right now, the trend factors are like ten percent or like point eight percent every month. Well, if you pull it right now, or you pulled it after February's claims, you've pulled it seven months before the renewal date, which means there's seven months of compounding trend that gets added when there's no reason to pull it because the claims aren't that good anyway. So there's several things that we got to hope that happens, maybe. And last month, the claims got a little better by us waiting that month for this process. But if we wait, then we get three or four more months, the claims get a little better, we get three months of trend off, plus we have to have some approval. It's like I told the insurance committee, you know, sometimes people ask me, well, if you wait until May or June and Florida Blue doesn't give us the best renewal and doesn't work it. First of all, I worked there for thirty years, so I know exactly what the right formula is, I know what the right thing to do is. So I will be looking at that to be, be right. Well, if we wanted to bid it, we could bid it for January one. And I always tell people, on October one, if you made a change to Adner United, employees have deductibles and out of pockets that are messed up. So from my standpoint, I, I wouldn't want to make a transition on an October one date anyway to another carrier because the employees get penalized, their pharmacies are messed up, the out of pockets out. So there's a lot of things that go into a strategy of what, how to manage this correctly for the benefit of the employees. And so that, I think that's the experience that most, most agents don't have that I have from sitting behind the desk at Florida Blue that I hope to bring to the, to the school district. One of the things that I know, I personally didn't do, but I know my counterparts sometimes do, is they don't fight as hard with underwriting. I mean, you got a Blue Cross rep that's got fifteen other renewals to work. He's got three or four that are, are bigger. So it's my job as your agent to make sure that we focus on this group. And, and I tell you that because a simple thing is, I'll give you just one little simple example because I know that you've got other things to do tonight besides listening to me. But the, the simple thing is, is when people go, what about the annual refund? Are we going to continue with that? Is, you know, we have Blue Cross people that will say, here's the renewal, it's fifteen percent, but we're going to give you an annual refund, a fifty percent refund. Well, they didn't give us anything if we didn't check the admin fee. Because if the standard admin fee to do the renewal that was fifteen percent was sixteen percent, and the, after they give you the pro-share agreement, they give you that contract to sign, and that fixed cost in that contract is no longer sixteen percent because they put a risk charge in there and they run it up to nineteen or twenty. Well, that means that they keep the nineteen or twenty before they give you a refund, which means that might be why you don't get a refund because the fixed cost got run up. But my problem is, is I don't care if you're going to give me any money back, but I don't want that nineteen percent used in next year's renewal, not if it should be sixty. So there's things in these contracts that we have to look at. The other thing, like I shared with the insurance committee, is I know that the, that they have a contingent premium. I, in thirty years with Florida Blue, I never, ever took a contingent premium out to one of my groups. You know why? Because even if I worked there, I didn't believe in that contract. I understood how it worked, and, and I would not take that to one of my groups. So I guarantee you one thing, one thing we'll be out of is a contingent premium contract because there's a risk charge in that. And, and that's set up for, you know, if we went out to bid, well, to leave Blue Cross, you also got to write a check to them to, to leave. The other thing with that pro-share is if you read it, you have, they don't do the accounting until ninety days after a renewal. So if they give you a decent renewal and it's not done right, you really can't leave because they hold over your head with that, that you can't leave and you won't get the money. So there's a lot of things that we can do with these contracts when we're talking about, yeah, you're going to give us a pro-share? Well, okay, well, that's fine. But if it turns out it's good, I want the annual accounting after the end of the contract period, not three months later. And, and talk about those things. You know, I'm not, I'm not opposed. I, I know that the district, Ben mentioned to me, we've, we've had a bad experience before with self-insured. I understand that because I think back then, y'all were the TPA out of games where they didn't have networks, didn't have discounts. And there are things that can be a problem. Calhoun Schools is self-insured, Taylor Schools is self-insured, Jackson is, Bradford's fully insured. So I'm, I'm fully aware of the risk associated with self-insured, but I'm also not close-minded to the opportunity to do it. Because to give you one example that a lot of people don't realize, is there's about eighty to ninety thousand, maybe a hundred thousand dollars worth of pharmacy rebates that the insurance company keeps in a fully insured contract. That when you're self-insured, all those hundred thousand come back to the district. So that's just one, there's other things you get. So there are things with fully insured versus self-insured that I can explain. And if you have the proper stop loss, it's, it works, it's worked for Chris Olson over Taylor Schools, it's worked for Darryl Taylor at, at Calhoun Schools. So, but, you know, again, St. John's River Water Management District is one of my groups, and there's a claim going on there that I've sat there and told them that as long as that person's there, you can't go self-insured, you can't, we can't even think about it. So I can't look at a lot of the claims information, not being the agent before tonight, to help y'all understand some of the things we can look at.
What, if you don't mind, what do you mean by self-insured? I mean, could you just explain that?
Okay. Self-insured is you pay Blue Cross an admin fee. So they basically give you their network discounts, they give you everything they do. You might would pick on a group this size, you might say, we will insure, we will self-insure every claim that's up to seventy-five thousand. And any claim over seventy-five thousand, we buy a reinsurance force. So we will handle all the small claims. And right now, if your claims are running three million dollars, you know, if, if that's three million for, for all the claims under seventy-five thousand, then you would self-insure up to that point. Well, to give you an idea, just one example. Generally speaking, I like to tell people, they go, what's the savings for going self-insured versus full insured? It's about six, seven percent. Okay? So it's not a lot of money, but it, it, there is six, seven percent. To give you an idea, I threw out a minute ago that the admin fee might be on full insured sixteen percent, eighteen percent. Well, if you took, take sixteen to eighteen percent on your calculator of your single rate, of your family rate, you'll find out that your admin fee with Florida Blue is probably somewhere around a hundred and thirty dollars per employee per month. That's, you know, if you took sixteen, eighteen percent of your single rate, sixteen percent of the family rates and the rates, and then, and then took that total dollar divided by, you know, four hundred employees or how many people are covered, you'd probably come up with a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and thirty dollars. And I, I haven't seen, because I don't, I'm not privy to the data, but having worked there for thirty years, I can generally tell you what, where it is. Well, if you went self-insured as a member of PACE, which y'all are a member of, PACE pays forty-two dollars to Blue Cross for admin fee. So right away, you're picking up a hundred dollars per employee to go self-insured versus full insured. So you get that, plus the pharmacy rebates, you can kind of start to see where six, seven percent comes in. I'm not a proponent of sitting here tonight telling you which way to go. I'm just telling you with my experience and the actuaries, I'll be reviewing contracts, I'll be reviewing your claims, I'll be looking at the claims, and we'll pick the right time to pull a renewal, to request a renewal. And Blue Cross won't have any leverage because if it's not done right, we still have January one. Just because we renewed October doesn't mean we can't leave in January. So they may have to deal with a bid at that point, but we're going to give them every opportunity to treat us right.
That, that sounds good to me. I mean, this has been a problem that we've had for years and that it just keeps rising. And within the last few years, there's only been one time that we really got money back from our.
Right.
Pro-share. In the last two years, it's been over a hundred thousand dollars each time. And that's a lot of money.
Correct.
For our small district to come up with.
Right, we're going to stop that.
Yeah, I mean, it's just.
I wouldn't have that contract. And that's, that's why I'm here tonight, is because I, I knew a couple of groups that had things that I, I didn't have when I was at Blue Cross. I'll, I'll never bring you anything that I wouldn't bring myself or by myself, and I can promise you that. The one thing I can share with you is in your booklet, there is a paper clip with a card, I didn't staple it or anything because I want you to take that card. There's only one phone number on that card, it's my cell phone. And I can tell you this, that any employee that has an issue with Florida Blue, we have a service rep, Laura Santa, that's assigned to the group. But many times, there are meetings and they're not always available for urgent situations. Having worked there, I know about five or six other service reps. So if Laura doesn't answer the phone, I know five or six others who will get a phone call to, to get it fixed.
Well, I appreciate you coming. Does any other board member have a question for Mr. Kelly? Okay, if not, is there a motion to, to approve Mr. Kelly as our insurance agent of record?
I move to approve Mr. Kelly as our insurance agent of record.
Okay, is there a second?
I second.
It's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson, seconded by Mr. Carroll, any discussion?
I feel good about what you, the fact that you can be overseeing this, so thank you.
I do, I also feel good about it. It's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson, seconded by Mr. Carroll. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, show a hand, please. Five oh, Ms. Bishop, for approval of Mr. Kelly as our insurance agent of record. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Look forward to working. Look forward to working with everybody.
Thank you. Okay, the next item, 5.4, is the out-of-district field trips. The first one is from Lee Elementary Pre-K to the Challenger Learning Center in Tallahassee, Florida on March 31, 2022. The trip is scheduled from 8:30 to 2:15. It's being paid by the PTO at Lee. 17 students will be attended and four chaperones. The second field trip on the list is the MCHS Power Energy Students to Hamilton County Solar Facility, and that will occur April the 8th, 2022. The trip is scheduled from 8:30 till 2:00. There's 12 students and one chaperone attending. And that's all the field trips I have. Is there a motion to approve the field trips?
I made a motion to approve the field trips.
It's been properly moved by Ms. Bell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson. Is there any discussion? If there's no further discussion, it's been properly moved by Ms. Bell, seconded by Ms. Gibson. All those in favor, show a hand of the field trips in favor. Favo, Ms. Bishop, for approval of the field trip request. 5.5, staff trips. The one staff trip we have is Ms. Joseph to the FADS Convention in April the 13th through the 15th, 2022, in Orlando, Florida. That's the Florida Superintendent's Association is where she will be going. Is there a motion to approve her request?
I'm, I move to approve a staff trip for Ms. Joseph.
It's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bell. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion. It's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson, seconded by Ms. Bell. All those in favor of the staff trips and Ms. Joseph attended Orlando, April the 13th through the 15th, please show a hand. Favo, Ms. Bishop, for approval. Okay, moving right along. 5.6, the public hearing of the math adoption. Ms. Hill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight is the night when we are able to receive public comments on the math curriculum that the district would like to adopt. We've advertised the curriculum that tonight would be the public hearing. We put it on the website where parents can go on and look at the sample materials for every subject or grade level. Math is not usually a very controversial subject area when it comes to, you know, objective, objectionable material. However, it is a requirement that we, we advertise that information for parents to be able to, to look at and to give input. So if you have anyone who would like to give input, now is the time.
Where, where, Ms. Hill, was that being advertised, that on the district website?
Yes, it's under instructional materials for the, on the district website. And then tonight's meeting was advertised in the newspaper.
In the newspaper. And could you clarify to the public what program we are
Sure.
saying to go with?
We, we have decided to, to go with SABSS math materials. The program is in vision for the best standards. That is, we're going to go K-12 with that. In the past, we've, we've allowed, you know, different grade levels to choose different curriculum. But with moving the sixth graders back to the elementary schools and then eighth grade teaching algebra, when the high school chose SABSS and the elementary chose SABSS, we just felt like we needed to, to be consistent. And so the committee decided to go with SABSS all the way across the board.
I like that idea.
Me too.
I feel like it probably should have been that way. I don't know. I mean, just seems logical to me.
Yeah. We were just trying to, you know, give teachers as much input as possible and, but, but I am seeing some gaps when we, when we don't do that. And so hopefully by moving toward, you know, one curriculum, K-12, that will help.
Now, will this be good for five years or?
Yes, ma'am. This will be good for the, the whole cycle. And, and the way this works is the state of Florida negotiates the prices with the, the textbook companies. And that way, you know, because they're negotiating for the whole state, they get a, a better deal. And then we purchase the materials through the school book depository. And they, with these materials, there's, for the printed materials that are consumable, the company is required to provide those consumables every year for the whole cycle.
And that's five years?
That's five years.
Now, would, would this company, I'm just wondering, would, would they want to continue with this the next, after this five years is over with? Do they usually say, well, we're still, or, I mean, how's that work?
They, they do, but the, the state previews the materials
Okay.
and puts out a, a list of ones that are approved by the states. And sometimes
Sometimes it's
the materials on there, sometimes they're not.
I got you.
We just, we have been using Eureka Math. Eureka Math was not an option this time because they're focused on common core.
Okay.
And we had to have a company that focused on the Florida best standards.
And five years from now, it may be another
Could be.
Because back five years ago, Eureka was the greatest and best and now, and looking at it in the advertisement where it says like third grade accelerated, would that be for accelerated students or?
There, there are materials for accelerated students. We typically, we use the same curriculum across the, you know, grade level. But there are supplemental materials that can be pulled in for accelerated students.
Are we going to be able to use ESER money to buy this or not?
We're using, so that we can do all, the whole adoption at one time. Part of it's be, will be paid out of ARP, which is the ESER III, and then part will be paid out of instructional materials.
So we're buying the entire?
Yes, sir. Just like we did for ELA this past year.
Well, that's good. I mean, it keeps it from coming out of the general fund. Okay, at this time, I will open it for public hearing on the math adoption. Is there anyone who would like to say something concerning the program? Any board member who would like to comment on it?
I, I encourage that we're going to be doing the same thing from one end to the other and stuff, that consistency, I think, sometimes.
I think that was a wonderful idea.
Okay. If there's no comments from the public, I will close the public hearing at this time concerning the math adoption.
I'd like to ask Mrs. Hill a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't, I'm not sure if this was the appropriate timing about our reading series.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I've talked to you, you'll probably tell you're listening to me about it. Do you know what I'm going to bring up about the cursive writing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And Florida is one of the 20 states that requires teaching cursive writing. And I imagine that's going to happen in third grade, but you, you said it was going to be incorporated in the reading series.
It is incorporated in the reading series. It starts in grade three and runs through grade six. The, the, because we use a different series for sixth through eighth grade,
Okay.
it's not part of that. So it goes three, grades three to five.
Okay, but in other words, is it going to take three years to teach them how to write cursive, which it really should only take one, half a year maybe?
Yeah. And what, what they do is, and I, I pulled that for you, I'll get it before you leave tonight.
Okay.
It's, it's a curriculum that you really have a choice if you want to implement it in third grade, fourth grade, or fifth grade. And so, you know, in the past, we've, we've looked at the standards and said it fits with third grade standards.
Right.
However, there are standards for cursive writing in third, fourth, and fifth grade.
Okay. Is it one of those things though, that the, it's an optional for the teacher to say, well, I can, we can get that?
No, ma'am.
Okay. In other words, it's, it's going to be taught then?
It is a, it is a state standard. It has to be taught.
I won't go, you know what I'm talking about because I've already discussed what happened and what I observed, and I'm not going to say anything in front of the board in, in public. But it's, it's a shame when you graduate from high school, which I saw this when I was at the high school, and they can't write their name, they can't read cursive, they can't write. I mean, in other words, it's like, it's limiting to the students and I, I, it's, it's actually embarrassing to them, I would think.
Well, and I, we, cursive had kind of fallen off.
Yeah, I know, I know.
But it is back in the best standards.
Yes.
And so we will be teaching it because it's part of the best
It's kind of a hot issue right now and
And it is something that has to be done consistently and
Mm-hmm.
year after year because you can't expect someone to roll into fifth or sixth grade and suddenly you're writing a paper in cursive and they can't even print. I mean, that's the issue. I mean, even, even the penmanship for basic printing is horrible where just reading people's names on their work is hard at times to do, so.
Well, like I said, it's, it's required in Florida.
Right. It's something that needs to be done with consistently across the grade levels where it build, it's a building process.
Yep.
Because even in third grade, like penmanship is so poor in just reading names on papers that at times you're sitting there, okay, what does this even say? I mean, I can't imagine ELA teachers having to read in fourth grade paragraphs in papers for students. I mean, I can't.
I'm not sure when it's, I was made aware of it when I went to the high school and I didn't realize that they couldn't write their name until I saw a couple of things going on and I actually addressed it to a student individually.
It's
And they said, no, we can't, I can't write my name, I thought.
It's a big issue and if the, if the handwriting is poor enough, I mean, they're referred to an OT for handwriting skills, but again, there are many students who, and I don't know if it's just not being taught in kindergarten, like the basic printing of how to, that, with the rush of teaching everybody to read in Pre-K and kindergarten, you're not doing those fine motor skills of printing and knowing how to form the letters because it is really something, even trying to read people's names of whose paper belongs to which student.
Yeah. I, I think you, you know, if you would talk with elementary teachers, they'll tell you they're having a hard time getting in, you know, teaching the standards that they're required to teach, along with those fine, you know, practicing those fine motor skills. It, it's, it's very difficult.
In fact, sadly, back what was taught 25 years ago in kindergarten, you had students who came out and learned to read and could write and write in cursive. And now, I mean, you have to at some point stand back and examine what's going on developmentally appropriately that maybe it's not going on. But, but yes, it's a big, it's a big issue and a big, I, I can't, I mean, I just can't imagine some of these kids being able to write in cursive when they can't do manuscript. I mean.
Well, do, let me ask you this, in kindergarten, are they teaching the correct way to write the letters?
They are.
They are.
That is part of, of the standards. One of the positive things about the new best standards is they went back and they, they took away some of the standards that were really too difficult for students, developmentally appropriate, and they went back to add some things that were more developmentally appropriate, like the fine motor skills in kindergarten. And so they're able to now have time to do that, whereas, you know, before we changed to the best standards, they, they couldn't. And that was one of the things that led to some of the changes in the standards was, you know, teachers saying, we're, we're focusing on standards that are not developmentally appropriate. And so now with the, with the best standards, they are more aligned with what the students can do developmentally.
Well, thank you for that information.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the math adoption for this school year for the next five years?
We can't.
We're not going to vote tonight?
Tonight is just for the public hearing.
Okay. Well, we're hoping the public hearing, it'll be advertised for the next 30 days.
Actually, it's already been advertised. Then you have to have the public hearing tonight and then at the, April, the fourth meeting, you can vote on it.
Okay, so if anyone in the public has any comments concerning it, now will be the time to come back before us and by the next meeting and tell us any concerns you may have concerning it. Because we don't want anyone to feel like that we haven't been as transparent as possible concerning this curriculum. So at this time, we'll close the public hearing for the math adoption. And the next item, 5.7, is the revision to the 2022, 2023 student calendar, Ms. Hill?
Yes, sir. We're just trying to get everything straightened out in advance so that we can put this calendar out to, to parents and staff so they can make plans for next year. With moving the sixth graders back or letting them stay at the outlined schools, instead of the first day on the 10th being for Pre-K, first, sixth, and ninth, it would be, we, there won't be a sixth grade to do that with for this coming year, so it will just be Pre-K, kindergarten, first, and ninth. The following year, we would make it seventh. But next year, seventh graders have already been at the central school. The other thing we need to add is for June of 2023, June the 19th needs to be a holiday. That's, you know, during summer school, but it would be a, a holiday that we need to add for Juneteenth.
I agree.
So just a couple of changes we needed to make there.
Okay, if there's nothing else, is there a motion to approve the revisions to the 2022, 2023 school calendar?
I move to approve revisions of the 2022, 2023 student calendar.
It's been properly moved by Ms. Gibson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Williamson. Any discussion? There's no discussion, all those in favor of the revisions, show a hand, please. Favo, Ms. Bishop, for approval of the revisions to the 2022, 2023 student calendar. Thank you, Ms. Hill. The next item, 5.8, the staffing allocation plan, Ms. Joseph?
Okay, Mr. Chair, I have the staffing allocate, the proposed staffing allocation plan for next, next year and what I, the way I want to treat, I want to go through it because we've got some major changes in it this time and we're going to talk about it, look at it, give you time to think about it, and vote on it next week. Okay. Looking through, if we start on page three. This is how we would like to staff our student schools for next year and our elementary schools, we have listed as the Pre-K through six. That's, that's a change. We've got, we're basically using the student ratios and other things. This is the basic staffing that we have our elementary schools and it's, nothing's changed there. Your Pre-K, par professional, that's only if you have the Pre-K class. And for your combination school, it's still will be a Pre-K through eight. And if you see an asterisk, basically that will be paid for through special funds. And if you look on the bottom of the pre, the combination class, we've got listed approximately how many students that we are anticipating that will be at the central school. Going to the next page on page four, the high school. The one big difference on this page is the MTSS, they do not have an MTSS person, but they had a graduation coach MTSS person. That was paid for out of UNICEF. UNICEF, if the school grade increased, UNICEF will go away and so we need to add that position to the staffing plan for the high school. Any questions so far? Any questions so far? Let's go back to the central school, combination school. This is the big, big, I need you to concentrate on your combination school, pre-K through eight. Those are our big changes. We've had our community meetings, we've heard the conversation. We need to address the issues at the central school. We need to change something. Okay? We've listened to everybody, and so, we've come up with some proposed changes. So these are going to be the big changes. We've had the people, the lady from DOE to come and says, hey, we're not going to split up the central school. Okay? Central school will still remain as a one school. But my proposal is that we function partially as two separate schools, but at the end of the day, we'll still get one grade. And so, what I'm proposing for at central school for the pre-K through five, they have pre-K through five side and a six through eight side, and have a principal over the pre-K through five side, have a principal over the K through, six through eight side. Have two assistant principals for your pre-K through five, and one assistant principal for your six through eight. Okay? Both schools will share a behavior specialist. Both sides will share a guidance counselor. Okay? You'll have two school secretaries. You will have one for the elementary side, one for the middle side. Okay? Your MTSS RTI, you'd have two, but one of those would be funded out of your CARES grant, E R P. Okay? We'll still have one media specialist, one payroll secretary, one bookkeeper, one data secretary, two receptionists, they're around that school someplace, heads. But the other part is basically the same. But the big difference that we hope that will come about, we'll have two separate, we're going to function partially as two separate schools with two separate heads, and there will have to be common time. Any comments, questions there?
I think so. Wonderful idea.
I do, too. Because each one of these principals would only, middle school problems are totally sometimes different than elementary problems. And so, you have that one principal just focusing on the middle school issues and another on the, do we need to create a new principal position?
That's the purpose of this right here. This is our proposed staffing allocation plan. That's why I'm bringing this to you. And that's why I don't want to rush into it next, and I'm going to ask you, unless you just want to vote on it this week, we can vote on it next week if you want to take some time and think about it. Okay? But at the end of the day, I need you to understand, we're still going to get one grade.
Right, right.
This idea probably back 15 years ago was something that we had thought about. I mean, I think it's worth trying. I mean, I don't know that we have any other options but to try it. I think some of the drawback back at that point was that we had went to DOE concerning splitting the school. They wouldn't do a separate number. Would even set about possibly having a principal at the middle, a principal at the elementary. And some of the drawback back then was, you still have to have someone in charge of the school, seeing that you use common areas. And again, those are things that can be worked out because I don't think, I think we're at a point where we have to try something, and maybe this will work. I mean, you have to try it. But that was back 15 years ago, that was the issues that were brought up. And while we maybe didn't do it back then, several principals ago, in that there was a lot of, like, pushback in that it is such a big school, you would have common areas where someone has to make a decision at times. I mean, someone's got to be in charge to make those decisions. And maybe that's something that you need to think about.
I think if that's decided ahead of time before issues come up, who's going to handle what in the common areas that it could work? If you wait until a situation happens and then try to decide, well, who's going to handle this, you're going to have a problem. But I think if it's spelled out to begin with, then, you know, whoever the two principals are, they know who's responsible for what.
Duties are, issues such as rent in the facility, issues such as funerals, issues such as, but I know we're not, but we still, that doesn't stop people from requesting it. And I think that was some of the pushback back then. And just being the size of the school, we kept hearing that someone has to be in charge. Someone has to be the person that ultimately is in charge of.
I think there's two things. We've got fewer students now than we did back then. And the other thing, I think it's the superintendent. Because to the extent you have conflict at that school, it's going to come to your office. And so, if you're okay with that and willing to do it, I think it can work.
We've just had so much controversy, so many people had, with going around and around in circles, we've got to try something new. What we've been trying before, switching people, switching people, you've still been getting the same results. We've got to make some marketable change if we're going to be able to lure students back to our school. We can't keep doing the same thing that we've been doing.
Right. I think I would like to see it happen for this year because, you know, nothing is permanent, of course.
No, it's not permanent.
We can check it out for a year and see how it goes, and it couldn't hurt, that's for sure.
While we do have the funds, we have assistance of the art money, S and money, and we're able to do this.
I think it's a wonderful idea. I mean, it takes some of the stress off of one principal with having two, and then they can combine together to help with the problems and the issues that we need to address at central school.
No, I think it's worth trying. I just request that we plan ahead and assign, think about ahead of what people need to be assigned to be over what. So it's not, because that was an issue back years ago. And I want to say that, which Ms. Waldrop was our director for many years, but she was probably the director of instruction and maybe during Ms. Miller's time as superintendent, we had talked about it. And just that, at that time, it wasn't something we could do. But that, even back to that point, there were issues within the school we were trying to work out and trying to problem solve of how to make it improve the learning environment. So this is a new situation. It's just a new chapter of where we're at.
Now, I'm not sure, of course, it's up to the superintendent, but to me, like, for instance, there's going to be an elementary principal and a middle school principal. So you would think that maybe, you know, someone that's already experienced in elementary schools would be a good fit for that. But that's going to be your call, though. And maybe middle school who's had some experience, but I'm just, so that would be a positive thing right there.
Okay. And like I said, we've had community meetings, we've heard people talking, we experienced this ourselves. We want change. We know it's not going to be perfect. But the problem comes in when we sit down and not do anything. And so, we are going to try something. We know we're going to have mistakes. But one reason I'm presenting this to you now, and I'm going to wait until, I really want to wait until next week, give you time to, even though it's been posted to the board doc, give you time to digest it if you have any more questions, and then we'll vote on it next week.
Yes. And I think this board has proven that we, I'm willing to accept new ideas. We've already put some different things into place. So we're not, like, I think as a whole, we are in favor of change and hopefully for the best.
But I don't think it's going to be perfect. We will have some stumbling, but if we work together, we go into it with a positive attitude, I think we'll succeed.
I agree.
Well, we have to try. I mean, if you, if we try and it doesn't work, then we'll, we can back up and do something else. But I think you need to try to do something that.
Okay. Now, continuing through on page five, the one major change that we've had on page five is that the payroll specialist, not the payroll specialist, the benefit specialist, a couple of superintendents back had made an administrative position, and we removed the administrative part from that. And on page six, that's your basic instructional unit allocations, that's stamped by the state. Page seven, that's standing, that's been in here before.
Ours are not numbered.
Mine is at the bottom.
Okay. Page six, talking about instructional unit allocation, 118 for pre-K through three, 122, 4 through eight, 125, 9 through 12. Okay? Another thing for bridge program, we've still have to maintain bridge. Okay? We've got to have a stop gate for our students. Like Mr. Landry was saying, everybody is not going to be everything that we want them to be. We're going to have to have some corrective action in place. And this is another thing, you live and you learn. We have Ms. Williams out there as the lead teacher administrator. We discovered that we also need a full-time teacher and two paros out there. So we'll have an administrator, a teacher, and two paros. As opposed to this past year, we had the administrator and three paros.
I agree with that.
I agree with it.
Okay. The next page talks about the ESC instructional allocations, that's standard. The next page is blah, 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 blah. The next page talks about custodial funding needs, and this has not changed. And the next page talks about the cafeteria needs, that has not changed. And the last page, these are some positions that we're planning on funding through the CARES ART grant. Again, it's a life on these positions. Hopefully, we can utilize them to the fullest and get our people trained up and do what we can and if another, but at the end of this grant, if we do not have a funding source, these positions will disappear. And again, that's my proposed staffing allocation for the next school year.
This would probably be a good time to look at allocation for other schools. And if you have, if you see a, and I'm not saying that there are some, but this would be a time to bring up for discussion if there's a position that you may not think that we need for us to look at. I mean, since declining enrollment, we need to constantly be looking at numbers concerning of whether or not we need the total number of people we have. I mean, no one hates to say that, but that is something we should always be looking at.
That's being addressed in the individual staffing allocations per school when we're using these numbers to staff the school. And this is for general fund, but then your title, one of your art, some people, some schools chose to use that to fund position at the school.
But what, the point I'm making is, we've had a lot of people who have retired, and we haven't had positions go away, if that makes sense, for us to be having, be in decline in enrollment like we have in years past. So I just, I don't want to be blindsided that we suddenly are having to make all these cuts when we have had opportunities to cut all along as people retire, just not refilling positions. We need to take a good, hard look at that when people better retire. Do we truly, or could that position be absorbed somewhere else within the district versus, I mean, if enrollment was stabilized, or if enrollment was increasing, then you may not have to be doing that. But with declining enrollment, I would think every person who retires, other than a teacher, of course, you know you're going to have to have back a teacher, but any other support staff, you need to take a look at to see if you, if you, if it could be absorbed in another area.
During this cooldown period, between this week and next week, we'll take a look at that.
I mean, that's just something, at one point, if you remember back, we had a hiring freeze where any, any person who retired, it had to come back before us to replace that person, to see if we truly.
At least that gave you an opportunity to take a look at and see.
I mean, we should always be doing that because you just never know what at school.
And like, the enrollment every year, every year has gone down.
And it keeps you, when things get really bad, if you can look at each time somebody leaves, do they need to be replaced?
You're not going to let.
Having to do a potential layoff in years to come. You don't want to do that, you know, if you can get around that.
That's the only thing I'm asking, is that we take a look.
And I know one district that did not ever do that and was so overstaffed, they had to have a massive layoff when things got bad, and that's not what we want to have to do.
Yeah, we don't want that to happen. So I just ask that, as people are retiring, that we take a look at, could their position be absorbed in another position, or do they truly need to come back?
Ms. Killensworth, we'll take a careful look at that before next week.
Okay. If we're not going to vote on the staffing allocation plan, 5.9, the school volunteers. Are there any other questions concerning the staffing allocation plan? Take a good look at it, study it over the next however many days, and we'll reconvene at the next meeting.
Give me a call or contact me if you have any questions about this.
Thank you.
The next item is school volunteers. Mr. Killensworth?
Yes, sir. There are 16 names that we're bringing before you tonight in school volunteer form that we ask your approval on.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the school volunteers?
I make the motion to approve the school volunteers.
It's been properly moved by Ms. Williamson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, all those in favor of the school volunteers, please show a hand. Five of Ms. Bishop for approval of the school volunteers.
Thank you.
6.1, thank you Superintendent Adams. Ms. Joseph?
Okay. A couple of things. Someone from the Greenville, Greenville Training School Reunion Committee have requested that we donate those old trophies to them because they're in the closet someplace, blah, 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 and they want to start a museum for the town of Greenville. And I need your thoughts on that.
Donate what?
They have school trophies, but whoever's the principal out there, I don't know when it happened, they put the trophies in the closet or someplace, and they're not out there for display, and they want to display them for the city of Greenville, for the people of Greenville.
That's a good idea.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'd like to see them displayed.
Okay.
As long as they wind up in a museum or someplace, you know.
It won't wind up in anybody's house.
I didn't think so.
Not on somebody's mantle, huh?
Okay. Next thing, they have the FAS, the School Board Association Annual Summer Conference, June 8th through 10th. Ms. Bishop needs to know if you're planning on attending.
Okay.
You can tell her now or later. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Ms. Williamson, do you have anything?
Yes, I hope everybody had a restful spring break and ready to come back for testing and the end of the year excitement. And I would like to tell the football team that I'm very proud of them and sorry that we had our meeting tonight when they had their banquet, and hope that everything went well.
Ms. Gibson?
Now, I was just going to say, I had the opportunity of going into several class, several schools, and I was in different classes within the schools, and I always enjoy doing that, and I'll continue doing that. And thank you.
Mr. Carroll?
I just, I guess Mr. Killensworth would be the one I ask, yes. When people leave from here, do we have exit interviews?
Yes.
So they, so I mean, when you were asking, they come to see you?
Yes.
You ask them why they leave?
Because you're talking about on the list that I.
Any of them. I don't know why. I mean, we lose so many people, I'd like to know why we're leaving. I see where Jefferson County's advertising for teachers starting Saturday, 47, 5. Cause they back online again now, they're back with us. Okay. I just wonder.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Carroll, one thing to know, it looks like we're losing a lot of teachers. We are losing a lot, but that's an annual thing. It's not an anomaly this year.
Well, I know that.
It's the same thing every year.
I know, I know that.
And there's.
But somehow or another, we got to find a way to not lose so many.
Yes, and I expect a few more.
Oh, I do, too.
For the end of the year, and also next quarter, we should be bringing two more recommendations, one for the remainder.
There's such a shortage.
Yes, there's a shortage in the whole state, actually, in the United States.
134,000 teachers short in the United States. I saw that on the news last week.
It was no joke, but only one district that was fully staffed this year.
Better than the rest of them.
We did, too. We did, too.
Okay, Ms. Spell?
I hope that the staff and the students is well-rested and ready to finish off the year. From the new housing in Madison County, the behavior plan, and the staff allocation plan, I believe our future is beginning to look a little bright.
We should have required Mr. White.
We should have required Mr. Watts to make sure that at least, at least two children per house.
There's positive things going on in Madison County. I'm pleased.
I would like to wish everyone with the upcoming FSA the best of luck, the teachers, the students. I hope everyone had a great spring break. I want to congratulate the football team on their banquet tonight. Sorry we couldn't be there. I also would like to congratulate Mr. Harris as the new head coach of the high school for the football team. Wish him well. I have nothing else. Wish everybody a great week and, it's, Ms. Reeves, did I ask you, Ms. Reeves?
You didn't. We're going to have an expulsion.
Okay, so do you have anything?
No, sir.
Okay, if nothing for Ms. Reeves, at this time, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I make the motion to adjourn.
It's been properly moved by Ms. Bell. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Gibson. It's been moved by Ms. Bell, seconded by Ms. Gibson to adjourn the meeting. At this time, the meeting is adjourned, and we will close it for an expulsion hearing.